Good evening and welcome to the November 20th meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We'll start with the pledges of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will begin our meeting and we start with announcements. Do you know if we have any special announcements, Stephen?
Just final paving, still going on, so for folks to hopefully be patient with us as we finish up our work for the winter. And the Water Main project that's being done by East Long Meadow but will be passing through the intersection of Williams and Dwight probably won't start until the 27th.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know what that noise is.
It may be the BS alert. No, the project in East Long Meadow will start on November 27th. We've got some sign boards out and just obviously traffic's gonna be difficult flowing through there while that work is ongoing. Hopefully weather holds up for us that we can get that done, or say they can get that done.
Yeah, and this is going on Oak Street?
It's Dwight, they're gonna come down Dwight Road and they're gonna come through the intersection and turn east on Maple Street.
On Maple, okay.
And then go east on Maple Street. Once they get past the intersection, I think it'll be fine, or better, but it's just that tough turn they have to make.
Yeah, okay. They're not gonna be digging it up on Black Friday or anything?
Well, that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to, we're in discussions with them about potentially doing some night work, but they have a contract that's already set, so.
All right, all right.
We're just trying to keep people informed.
Okay, great. I don't know if there's any other announcements on the board? Okay, so we'll move on to resident comments. If anyone has a comment, they can introduce themselves and give us your address in town.
My name's Chris Orzak from 60 East of Lane.
You're in Long Meadow?
I'm Andrew Lamb from 734R, Long Meadow Street.
So first of all, thank you for letting us come before you today. We wanted to give you just a very brief update. Andrew and I are partners on the Brewer Young project and ideally we would like to be put on your agenda for the next meeting to give a more formal presentation, which would include a PowerPoint presentation as well as some of our formal plans that are being worked on now. Before I get into a little bit about the story behind this, I've only had the benefit of meeting Marie in the past, so. I've lived in town pretty much my whole life. My parents moved here when I was 10 from East Springfield. I went to St. Mary's School here in Long Meadow from kindergarten to high school and then went to Cathedral. My wife and I got married and graduated from college and bought a house here in town about 15 years ago. Had two kids and had our third and that house got a little bit too small, so we built a home off of Williams Street on what's now called Eastham Lane. Through that process, we bought the land and then the land at the end of the street, which we developed another home. My builder, who is the third partner, his name is Henry Clement, and we've got four children. They all go to school here in town. Three of them are at Williams Middle School and, excuse me, at Center School, and one goes to Montessori. And obviously Andrew has four kids, but I believe three at Williams and one at Center. And it's funny because we've really just had the opportunity in the last year or two to meet and our two youngest boys are actually in school together and-
Play each other's house.
...this quite often now, so. But we're, between my wife and I, we coach over a dozen soccer, lacrosse and basketball teams here in town. We're very active in the community. I'm on the board of the Long Meadow Montessori here and, you know, my day job is not real estate development, I'm in the finance business. And I've had some experience through building our street. I had to inherit the responsibility of the bond for that street when we built it back in 2011. So I spent some time with the planning board and, over the course of a couple of years, so I'm familiar with that process, but certainly real estate development's not my day job. How this came about was, you know, we walk our kids to school pretty much every day and I've passed by this home for many, many years. I've watched it deteriorate before our eyes and it's, you know, personally it saddened me to watch what's happened over there. Oftentimes when we give people directions to our house, we have to point out, you have to take a right or a left off of Long Meadow Street at that kind of dilapidated house. So I went and met with Christina and Andrew, we have mutual friends, about 18 months ago and had a discussion with them around the time it was going into foreclosure about what their thoughts were because ultimately he was as the man of butter and being on the Historic District Commission for a long time. And there were certainly, and my thought at that point in time was the property was frankly too large and probably too far gone to be a practical single-family residence. And, you know, I think Andrew and Christina, you know, definitely had their reservations about rezoning it at all. Andrew can certainly speak to more of that than I can, but, you know, over the course of the next two years, if you fast forward to today, we got a call in September and, from the real estate agent that was gonna list it to inform us that it was gonna go on the market. Andrew and I spoke and it all came together rather quickly. I introduced him to Henry, who built my house and built the house again at the end of Eastham. The three of us went to see it. We did our best with a home that obviously where there's no mechanical hooked up or anything. We gave our best crude estimate of cost to renovate it, which amounted to about $2 million, and then the cost to sustain it of probably over $100,000 a year. We concluded that in order to save this home, we felt like its highest and best use would be to be rezoned into something commercial, specifically a professional office was our thought. So when we bought the property back in early September, we've been working actually closely with Steve for the past few months, organizing our plans and formally doing those plans. And our plan, from a timeline perspective, was basically on December 4th, we wanted to come back here, like I said, and give a more formal presentation of our plans. On the 6th of December, we were hoping to present our plans to the planning board. We've seen them once at this point in time for their input. In the middle part of December, we were hoping to request a turn in our signatures at that point where we hope to receive a special town meeting. And, you know, Steve had mentioned to us, there's, the cost of that is, I think, around $2,000. We would be open to reimbursing the town for that expense. And then return back here, I believe it's on the 18th, if I have my dates all correct, to officially request that town meeting. But I may have left some things out along the way here, but that's, Andrew, please fill, that's the only time I've been able to get a word in before Andrew Lamb, so if you want to fill in any blanks that I forgot to mention.
I just, I think we just wanted to come and update you guys. I think a lot of people in town have been talking about this issue. I think a lot of people care about this house because we've all watched it kind of deteriorate over the years, so we wanted to make sure you guys were aware of at least the broad strokes of what we were hoping and we're hoping to come and give you much more detail next time and show you our actual plans in a couple of weeks, if that's okay.
Okay, great. So that would be the December 4th meeting. We have the agenda finalized by November 30th, so we'll process that request. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much for having us.
Is there any other resident, other resident comments tonight? No, okay. We can move on to select board comments. Do we have any?
No, go ahead, no, Marie.
Ladies first today, thank you.
Just two. One is I wanted to announce that, you know, I'm the COA liaison and they've come out with a new monthly bulletin, but what's really amazing about the bulletin, not only is it beautifully laid out in larger print, but it's not costing the town anything. They're saving thousands of dollars with the way that the new director has been able to reach out and get it published. So we're very excited about that. That's more funding for services and so I asked Jim to drop off some copies and I have four to hand out so everyone can take a look at it, but people should be getting to December and it's really a lovely bulletin. That was my first comment. My second comment was that the charter committee's been interviewing and talking to people and various groups in town. I think they've had the finance, they've talked to the schools, and I thought it'd be interesting for the select board to have an input. And I was just gonna go and talk in front of them, but then I thought, why don't I run this by the board? And one of the things that I found very interesting about the whole charter review is we've spent a lot of time figuring out what the roles and responsibilities of the town manager has been the past few years, but I think we need to sit down and look about what the roles and responsibilities are of the select board. And I know we've had through the past few years several discussions of that. Now, I wrote down what my understanding was and, of course, I'm sure Mark will have some additions, I've forgotten some things, but I wanted to hand this out. I sort of worked on this, I want to give that one to Debbie this afternoon, so it might not be complete, but part of this is coming from when we had, who was that that came and spoke to us? Was it Barry?
Bernie.
Bernie, Bernie. And some of the things that Bernie said, which I remembered when I put this down, that we're not really doing yet and so I thought we would, it would be interesting to review these. We can't do it today, it's not on the agenda, so this is just food for thought for future meetings. But one of the things he talked about, and I know it's not supervising, but monitoring what the correct terminology is for town operations, and he mentioned doing audits, setting policies for the town. And in regards to policies, I'm gonna hand out, I pulled up, we, last year, I know we're working on policies and I realized when I went back over the policies, a lot of our policies don't match what we're doing and I just don't know if we should go back and start looking at some of those policies. So I just printed out a few and I only have, my printer's dying, so if you wanna glance through some of those, it might be some we could look at in the future. So those were my select board comments. Thank you.
I just had one thing, you forgot that we, we signed contracts and bank notes when the town takes out big loans.
Oh, that's right, that's a good one. That's a clerk especially, gets to do that.
I hope we're not liable. We give the town campaign loans, yes, we definitely do some of those legal connections, but I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but thank you.
Mark, does he? Yeah, I just have two quick comments. The first one's personal, I wanna thank members of the select board and some people out in the general community. People know I was out and people have been very nice and kind and sent me their best wishes and I think I'm on the road to good recovery, so I want to thank everybody for their comments and I do very much appreciate it. The other thing is, and I had this written down to say, even without the comments we had earlier from people here, is that earlier we had talked about, and I remember there just, it was in the minutes of asking for one of our councils to review the issue of spot zoning, so we had that answer. And I guess, having given it some additional thought, Stephen, I was hoping that perhaps we might consider taking that, that request to somebody like a Copelman and Page who we've used as, as land use and land issue attorneys for a long time rather than, because my sense is whatever they say is gonna be tough for people to refute as opposed to our local town council who hasn't been a, you know, isn't a specialist in land use. So I just wanted to throw that out as perhaps it's worth in this issue getting an opinion from Copelman and Page there. For people who don't know, they're Boston-based, kind of the land use law firm for the Commonwealth and many, many people use them. In fact, I believe our zoning board uses them anyway and maybe our planning committee commission does not, no, but anyway, that was, those are my two comments.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Richard, did you even, did you wave your finger for us?
Well, I, if I can, I, certainly when Dave Martel was town council, he would acknowledge that he was not a specialist in land use. However, Mike Schneider, who's on the Conservation Commission for a long time, does have a lot more familiarity with those issues. We haven't used KP in a long time, I mean, three years plus. In fact, the last time we tried, the person that we had been using, I think I reached out to him a couple of times on a different issue and never heard back from him, so. I have confidence in Mike's ability to distill the issue. He's, to some extent, he's done some research, but he's waiting on getting a formal proposal from the-
Developer.
Developers.
Okay.
So he can opine on that specific proposal. And so he's, I know he's working on it.
Okay, thanks for bringing us up to date on that law firm, Copelman and Page.
I mean, if we feel like, the, I certainly am not opposed to getting a second opinion, but he's already, he's already engaged in it, Mark.
Okay, and Richard?
Yeah, yeah, I got to attend a kind of a fun event this weekend, it was put on by Pathlight, it's called Let's Dance. And Pathlight was a foundation started by five women back in 1952, they were mothers, to help their intellectually challenged children be in society. And it's still, still active, it's still roaring and these people absolutely had a blast of it. Two people from town participated as dancers, one was my son Scott Foster and the other one was Brian Ash. And Brian, I wish I'd taken a picture of him, 'cause I walked into place and I saw this little five-foot-four guy with blond hair hanging down here, with a tight t-shirt and tie-dyed, and he was coming a beeline towards him and for one moment I says, "I want outta here." 'Cause I didn't know who this was, and it was Brian Ash. And they, they absolutely had a ball. It was a highly successful thing, but it was Pathlight and, say, two of our people did participate. I think there was 11 dance couples, so it was really, it was really fun. The other thing I'd like to recommend, we got correspondence this afternoon from Russ Dupree, Dupree I think it is, talking about his foundation on his home. I'd like to see that put on next, the next agenda and have a better briefing to the board by some information from him.
Did we all get it, Richard?
It came in an email.
Okay, I must not have seen it.
Yeah.
Must've been late this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't see it, but I heard it came in.
Yeah, it must've been late then, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I think he's, he's like, he's pretty well prepared to discuss and at least get us started on the road anyway.
Mm-hmm.
It's some pretty shocking news.
I didn't get it.
All right.
Can you forward it, Richard?
Sure.
It's not in my emails.
Yeah, you sent it to everybody, didn't you? Yeah, yeah, Debbie sent it out.
Oh, okay, that one from Debbie.
Yeah, Debbie sent it out.
Oh, okay, then that's what, but we usually read your emails, Deb. We do. Sorry.
That was it.
Okay, yeah, the only other announcement I wanted to make is that I was surprised, happily surprised to see that the Long Meadow News picked up and did a little story about the walking school bus and I appreciate that. And I think one of the things is when you ask children, you know, what was their first description of a police officer, you know, a lot of times they'll say, "Oh, you know, my parents told me if I don't behave myself, that's the man who's gonna, you know, take me away or, you know, arrest me." And that's such a negative thing to say to children when you think about the role police play. And so, you know, the walking school bus, you know, it's nice, they can say, "Who's this policeman?" And they say, "Well, he's the man who's gonna walk to school with you and, you know, he's here to help you and be your friend." And that's, you know, very refreshing and they should do that in every community. I know they've tried some things in other communities with high-fiving and there was a lot of criticism and I was glad to see that we haven't received any criticism on the walking school bus and, like I say, I hope that it's something that'll happen again in the warmer weather. Any other comments? Okay, so let's move on to, we have quarterly board committees. We appoint some folks to committees on a regular basis and so we have, are you here for the, to be appointed? Okay, and you, all right, why don't you step up?
Jeff Spear, 76 Academy Drive.
Okay, Jeff. And you're applying for the-
Historic-
Historical.
Historical commission, yes, right. So you wanna tell us a little bit about your interest in that committee?
Sure. You know, just in general, I wanted to get involved in kind of the civic activities of the town anyways. I've been here six years. My wife and I moved here and she has family in East Long Meadow and we have two girls at Blueberry Hill. And so I don't have any formal qualifications for that committee, but definite interest in like, you know, colonial times, revolutionary times and I'm from Boston and, you know, I've done kind of a bunch of reading and stuff like that and I have been interested in, you know, the history of the town and so I just thought it would be an interesting fit.
Okay, great. Any questions for Jeff?
The only thing I would say is I'm just really amazed at the quality of the people that apply for these committees. It's really tremendous, you know. Quite an impressive resume.
Okay, great, anyone else? Okay, so we-
Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll make a, we'll make an announcement about the appointments, I guess within, probably before the end of the year or?
Fourth.
Fourth of December.
Yeah, fourth of December, okay.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming in.
Sure.
And for volunteering. All right, we had a second person who does not seem to be here, so let's move on and the next thing would be then our task manager, or our, oh, our town manager report. Should we do that quickly before Mr. Gunn or?
Um-
May not be quick.
Sure, I mean, I was, well, I was gonna make a suggestion-
Yes.
-on the board and committee thing, if the board would entertain it.
Okay.
So-
I think it's you.
Really? I turned it on. It is me, I'm sorry.
Gallon of milk, two bits of bread.
Good, it's not, it's not my wife.
So if the board entertained a suggestion, this is the second time this applicant hasn't showed up, I mean, I would suggest maybe not continuing to keep the application going forward, 'cause that way Debbie doesn't have to keep tracking the person down and do all that other stuff. If they wanted it, they'd be here.
We usually just have the two interviews and they don't make that, but try and give it another time.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd feel the same way, you know, I guess we could give them 15, I don't know, it's already been 15 minutes, over 15 minutes.
We can't make the appointments today anyway, so.
No, I'm saying this person hasn't even-
Right, so just, fine, but we don't have to appoint that person.
Yeah, but you can just reject the, you can just reject the application next time, that's all.
Yeah, right.
So I can be brief, in fact, I can be very brief. The town manager report.
Well, wait, before we go there, I just wanna say that, you know, my view on this too is that if a person is supposed to be here twice and they don't show and they don't call, that, you know, what's the odds of them going to the meetings? So I would agree with Stephen that, you know, that's probably the end of the road for this candidate, so, but, you know, I don't think it's ever happened before. It's never happened when I've been here.
It might have happened before, yeah. I would say we can make the decision next time we vote, yeah.
Okay.
And whether there's a motion on the floor. I mean, I always give some of the benefit of the doubt, something might really happen.
Okay, yes, I guess that's true. Thank you. All right, town manager report then?
So as you can see, I, as you remember, as we discussed a few, a couple of months ago, we, I changed tack on the Community Compact application, but I think it ended up getting larger than I could manage in a timely basis, meaning the indexing and scanning of records. I ended up reaching out to MMA and they expressed an interest in participating. And then the other one was a regional, regionalization of Board of Health Services, where both those things require dance partners that are at the ready and I wasn't as ready as I should've been and neither were they. So unbeknownst to me, the engineering department was way ahead of me working on another best practice application to help improve accessibility in the community, as you can see from the descriptions that are in the, in your printed report, which actually ties in with two of our other best practices, one of which was the safe, the older driver safety and our complete streets and a whole bunch of other things that we've been doing, so not surprisingly, members of the team had better ideas than I did. And so I reached out to Compact Community and said, "Would they entertain a reset?" And they said they would, and so I intend to submit for the best practices you see below, you see on the report, which are quite honestly a much better, a much better target for what we're doing right now, anyway. I will continue the effort on the others and then when we're ready, submit it, you know, next year. Then you do have the information in the packet about the Board of Health beekeeper regulations. The board asked for an update on that. I know they're meeting tonight. Beverly didn't really indicate which way she thought it was gonna go, one way or the other, so I don't have much to say about that other than you have the information in the packet. That's about it for me.
I don't know if anyone has any comments, yeah?
In regards to the best practices, is there anything the select board needs to do in regards to that application or anything in regards to the project?
No.
No?
No. I do need to go back to, and I forgot to put, yeah, I actually, I wrote this before I left. I was at the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association Fall Conference. I was in Lenox this year and it actually was, was very good about, the focus was strategic planning and there were some very good discussions about not only organizational strategic planning, but also community strategic planning and some of the challenges that are somewhat new in terms of interacting with the community, how the community responds to things, the role of social media, both when you are proposing a plan, but also the reactions you get on social media, means these are some of the things we're seeing right now on some other projects, and what a challenge that is for municipalities to handle. And, you know, I think some of the things we've done have been, have gone very well in that regard, some of the others not so well, but it was a good discussion. When they had a presenter talking about the organizational strategic plan and at first I, you know, when they were talking about the things you do when you're strategic, when you're in that planning mode and ways you can communicate and set goals and do all that stuff, I thought, well, I know we're doing that. I know we do it, I know we do it with department heads, but it just doesn't feel like we have this, you know, mythical strategic plan that's out there. And as we were discussing it, I had kind of an aha moment and I really think that our GFOA budget document really is our strategic plan, because when you break up the elements of goals, you know, tracking accomplishments, setting goals, talking about resource allocation and setting an overall vision for the organization, if you go through that budget document, it really does, you know, basically all of those things. And so when I was, when we were going through our exercises and they were talking about, you know, how does your strategic plan do X, Y, or Z, and there were these self-assessments, when I took our budget document and applied it, it answered, checked all the boxes very well, so I wanted, I guess it's basically we got a two-for-one. Our, our budget document also can function very well as our strategic plan. So that was kind of a revelation for me.
Well, good. Well, actually, I just wanted, before we go on, is just for folks who are out there, I know it's only about a handful of people in town who have bees and I know it came up last week, our last meeting two weeks ago. Just so, you know, we were talking about is that there is a Beekeepers Association that has a list of best practices that they expect beekeepers to hold to and so that list is in our, in our packet and it would be available through the town hall. If you're a beekeeper or have an issue with bees, you should look up that document and just, you know, see what we're talking about, because we don't have time to talk about everything, but I do wanna make it clear that there is a specific document that's tied to the Beekeepers Association of Massachusetts that is interacting in the Board of Health is trying to determine what to do about that. Okay, all right.
I was gonna say, so what are we waiting for on, is Beverly just hasn't decided what way to go? I mean, some of these suggestions are pretty logical, good suggestions.
It's actually the Board of Health that would promulgate regulations, so she's provided the information and helped draft things, but the Board of Health has not formally voted. Oh, speaking of the Board of Health, sorry. I did, I did have a brief conversation with the gentleman who was in that letter about the mosquito control district. The district actually was established and approved by the state, but I had a good conversation with the point of contact about what's it really gonna do. The big thing is there's really no surveillance, you know, activity going on regionally to see what mosquitoes are out there, what threats are out there. As a region, this would enable us to access some resources to help us do that. I'm gonna continue the dialogue with him and, you know, bring some more information back to the board, but I did follow up with that. So now all we'd have to do is really commit to joining a district and I think as it gets defined, the next step for them is to establish a board of commissioners and I think if we wanna be involved in it, we should, you know, join sooner or later so we can have a seat at the table.
Well, when I think of mosquitoes and surveillance, I think they're better at it than we are, so, you know, it'd be nice to turn the tables on them.
Yeah.
Okay, Marie, did you have?
Yeah, in regards to the GFOA, one of the things that I always feel is missing every year and that is the select board input. I remember when I was chair last year, you said, "Oh, you gotta, you gotta put this thing together." So where is it-
Yeah, in regards to the GFOA, um, one of the things that I always feel is missing every year, and that is the select board input. I remember when I was chair last year, you said, oh, you gotta, you gotta put this thing together. So, where is it that the select board writes something that goes into the GFOA? Isn't there some sort of vision statement or something that you're-
Select board has their own goals.
Well, shouldn't we review that every year, just like every department does?
We do.
The select board has a-
We have the goals, we have the goal, we have the goal sheet.
Not the goal sheet, what's written in the GFOA. Do you just take that goal sheet and throw it in, or?
Well, we have a, we write a, a brief narrative about, I mean, not a lot of that changes, I mean, usually it's the goal sheet and accomplishments and things like that. Debbie and I put it together based on actions that have been taken by the board, or, you know, from the minutes.
I think that there's, we, I still feel like-
You do it for your annual, the annual report, the chair of the select board writes a report.
Writes a letter-
Yeah.
-that describes overall what happened in the past year. I've been interested to see what we put in the past few years, and what the select board's section was written, so we could get a better idea of what goes in. And maybe compare on maybe how we can approve it the, the following year.
Do you have a copy?
I could go and get all my copies from the past few years, but-
I actually think both of them are online, under the finance department.
Under the finance department.
Under the finance department, you can see both the last couple of years' submissions.
All right, I'll print those out, and then maybe bring them for the next meeting.
And there's, there's also a narrative that I prepared, mainly financial, that's, that's also kind of an opener to it all, so.
Okay.
And then, I had a few questions on the, and comments on the town manager's report. Uh, first of all, I want to say that Lena, our new vets agent, she's doing a fabulous job. I think I was really impressed with the Purple Heart ceremony she put together, and I know she didn't have much time, but she really did a wonderful job with this last veterans' race, and what I really like to see is she's increasing socialization among the veterans, and including the families, and I think that's a new piece that she's doing, I'm very impressed with. So, I want to commend, uh, your hire there, and what the department is doing. I was also going to ask if part of, I know you have it in various sections of the town manager report, but I'd sort of like, even if they don't meet, if we get a report on the traffic committee, the safety committee, and the bylaws, what they're working on, just so we have a running idea of what's in front of the bylaws, tac, task group, what's in front of the traffic committee, and I know that when we set up the traffic committee, they were supposed to, when something goes in front of it, or there's a complaint after so many days, it's supposed to come to the select board, I just want to make sure that process is in place. We might not have any complaints that have come in the past six months or something, but even if the, in your report, it says safety committee, or traffic committee, there's nothing happening.
So, there's a traffic committee?
There's a traffic committee.
Not a safety committee?
I understood there's a safety committee that you meet-
The safety committee is an insurance management, a risk management committee.
Oh, I thought you established when you came in, there was a safety committee that met with DPW once a month, or every two, other month?
The DPW has their own internal group that works on safety, on their own safety.
Well, if you did-
And then we have, and then we have a safety committee that, that Paul actually heads, department heads, police fire, DPW, and then our MIA insurance rep to go over loss management and things like that. And then there's the traffic committee, which, which I usually, I usually do report on what the traffic committee does when we do anything significant. We only meet once a month, and there are months that we, we don't meet, because we may be in the middle of addressing all the, some of the complaints that come up.
Yeah, if we could just have it like they didn't meet this month, like the bylaw task force, I, I didn't know what they were really working on until it started to really come down the pipe for the warrant article, so I'd like to know what maybe went in front of it, and didn't make it in front of it, and didn't follow through, because it, it fell by the wayside, because it wasn't an appropriate bylaw. So, just a little more, um, regular reporting on those would be appreciated. And also, the, you talked about the upgrade in the Long Meadow Street plan, and I know it went in front of us in January, and you said, it stated in the report that it finally was, you, you picked a designer, and he's now taking our select board comments from January and changing up the plan? And are we now at the stage where he's created a plan yet, or they're still working on it?
We just hired him.
Yeah, I think it's in October, so when-
No, we, we just signed the contract like two weeks ago.
Oh, okay. So, when do you think we'll, we'll see the first renditions coming in? Do you think February, March, or?
I honestly don't know. I haven't, I haven't really gotten engaged with that yet.
Okay. All right, 'cause, so if we could have, I'm really looking forward to seeing what that's gonna look like, 'cause they're not gonna start next summer, are they? It's the year after?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, because I know we talked about a year ago, that we would want to, it is in historic district, and we might want to have a little more design features, like we just put in in the Conver Street and Dickinson. So, it'd be nice to keep an eye on that, so we can make sure, if we do want to have those upgrades, that we'll be able to have the input on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments on the report? I had a couple of things that, we have a, a new outreach coordinator, you may want to announce that. Do you usually do that?
Uh, usually I, I would usually bring them to the meeting after they start.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
We do, we do have a hire, she just hasn't started yet.
Okay, and, uh, I was wondering, it, it talked about the boilers that are going into Blueberry and Center School, the replacements, were those finished, you know, anybody?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, 'cause it said November, I don't know if they'll finish wave the schools.
I know they were in the middle of it all.
They were in the middle, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then-
I mean, we had a short week, the week before, and I was gone for two days, that's why I'm not a hundred percent caught up on everything.
Okay. And I did, you know, I was at an event last Thursday, and I, I ran into the mayor of Chicopee, Mayor Cos, and he was very excited about the participation of Long Meadow with Chicopee and other communities, and the regional emergency, um, communication center. So, he, he's hoping that it will be some financial savings for their city. And then, I also noticed that there was a, a fifteen thousand dollar training grant that was given to the police department, and it was, uh, from a group called CLOSE, which is a coalition of Long Meadow for a Substance-Free Community, and they're trying to change, or train one of the officers to be a, a drug recognition expert. So, that's nice, I had never even heard of that organization.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're about a year old now, maybe? Or no, it's just last summer.
Okay.
Maybe two years.
Really?
Maybe a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're not fifty years old, but they're definitely-
No, but they got a pretty good grant to hire a person, and they're doing some good work.
Yeah, and so, it's nice they're helping the police department out with that, with that task, too. So, I think that's, could be it, then. So, uh, let's move on to, um, look at our, um, oh, this is my agenda, everything got shot off here, unfortunately.
Walter Gunn.
Walter.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gunn, of course. Please, can you step up to the microphone?
Wow, good evening. The suspense was killing me, I wasn't sure, bumped from the agenda. Good evening, first, welcome back, Mark. Good to see you, smiling, getting back into the, the game, that's good. I missed your town meeting. I have a sort of vague agenda item here, it says, uh, planning, Piner Valley Planning Commission presentation, so, uh, with that said, I mean, do you want the history of the commission, do you want me to tell you what's going on currently, or do you want to ask me what the commission can do for the town of Long Meadow?
Well, it was something that came up, I, I don't know, was Marie, you asked about that? So, I guess, you could start wherever you feel most comfortable.
Well, I'll, I'll start off, um, as you know, I've been doing this since 2008, I was elected as a commissioner, um, as a member of the planning board, which is required by law, I'm, I was chosen as a commissioner to the Piner Valley Planning Commission, we have another member in the room as well, as an alternate, which is Stephen, who's also an alternate to the, to the commission. Then in 2012, worked my way up the ladder, I don't know, I was fast-tracked, and then I became, uh, chair of the Piner Valley Planning Commission, which is basically chair of the organization, the executive committee, and with that, we sort of served to, uh, validate a lot of the contracts and decisions and activities of the Piner Valley Planning Commission. So, in that important state, I have been always at the front of the town of Long Meadow, and a good example was Conver Street. I mean, we were able to knock a year off of that project and push it, um, back, just by a, a sudden technicality came up, and I jumped in and was able to, uh, move, uh, federal funds forward for that project. So, that's, I like to say, I try to always keep Long Meadow in mind, I come first, I'm on the planning board, so the importance and priority of Long Meadow comes first. For an example, just recently, I, you know, in our last meeting, we approved, um, a grant that would allow, um, Long Meadow to have a, a community solar feasibility study. Now, we've, as Mark and I well know, we've failed on the, the last attempt to have a, a solar array field. We actually had assistance at the time from the planning commission, that's why that, uh, solar voltaic, um, bylaws in our, in our bylaws is a result of, um, the work of the Piner Valley Planning Commission back several years ago, and unfortunately, we were, never came to fruition on that, that project. But, I, I'm not familiar, I, I proved this, but I'm not familiar with the semantics of it, but that's an example of the interaction between our town, the planning commission, and their relationship with state and regional and federal governments. We're always looking for grants, we're looking for any kind of money we can trickle down, and the planning commission has, has gotten a lot better, even since I've become the chair, uh, more outreach to small towns, rural towns. Everyone thinks the planning commission is really there to serve the bigger cities of Springfield, Chicopee, and Holyoke, but it really, uh, more their, they have their own departments, they have their planning, they have huge public works, um, management teams, so the commission passes through money to them, probably through federal and state grants, but the Piner Valley Planning Commission staff is available for towns like ours. East Long Meadow, for example, had a, has had a tragic situation with its, its town planning director, and she has been temporarily replaced by a, um, services from the planning commission, so they have, they have actually been able to put a planner in. In the rural towns, sometimes something like even having the job like Paul has, becomes problematic for a small town like Blanford or Otis, so they've been able to do, uh, regional shared, um, accounting and municipal, um, money management services. So, again, back to our town, it's always a question of, it's the big thing, one thing has been, uh, our, my, I sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the, which is our transit arm of the Planning Commission, which is a federally designated organization, and that's where we pass through the federal money, um, for road and highway improvements, not chapter ninety, but all the other, other big money, so, say, projects Conver Street, Long Meadow Street, um, possibly even, we could do something with, uh, the Conver Street-Dwight Road, uh, intersection. We, we approved that, um, district improvement funding, uh, last Springs Town meeting, but it's possible, there's CMAC money, which is congestion mitigation, we could possibly apply for, for money like that, and, and sitting on that board allows me a chance, as a voting member, to try to push forward our, you know, interests that we might have as a town in Long Meadow. So, I guess, I'd ask anybody here, if, you know, have suggestions or ideas, or, or looking for, uh, um, input from me. I will say, we've had our failures, we, we tried, a couple years ago, to do a reformat of our zoning bylaws, and the, I think the Planning Commission crashed and burned on that one. We actually, um, it was even confusion with the definition of a doghouse was, I mean, it was bizarre language, and we just walked away from it. So, you know, it's never a perfect world, I know, Mark, you've been critical over the years of, of planning commission, sometimes we get accused of, you know, too much boilerplate and, you know, not much personal attention, but I think we're all here to hopefully, um, try to squeeze out whatever dollars we can for the best interests of the community.
Okay, but as, as you're presenting things, I think-
Yeah.
-I do recall that may have been the issue that people wanted to know about, you know, where we're gonna get funding for that Dwight Street project, I think that was what triggered the invitation, so thank you for giving us the presentation so, so far. Now we have some questions, if you're ready for them?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I, I guess, Walter, thank you, I mean, I, I understand how much work it is on PVPC. I, I guess the question is using the, taking on the doghouse analogy, you know, Long Meadow and PVPC, which is the dog and which is the tail? I mean, do we set the agenda for the PVPC and can't, and how can we do that? Or do they really set the agenda for the region and say, here's where Long Meadow kind of, you know, dovetails into the, the broader regional agenda?
Right, that's a good question, and I think that's, I actually reflected on that tonight, I was going, you know, even I don't get to look at all the notes and the history of things I've done over the last several years, and I think that's changed, and I think this has always been a problem. Select boards generally have a real pushback against the Planning Commission, because they looked at it originally, and I saw it as that, as an organization that really was getting funded by federal and state mandates to push their agendas onto local communities. I think, um, Smart Growth Initiative was one of the classic examples several years ago. We were given a CD, and somebody had gone through Long Meadow and identified the, um, the community house town hall area as, say, the, as the business center of Long Meadow. I think that pressure seems to have gone away, and I don't know whether it's because funding has gone away, or maybe people have recognized, uh, at the commission, on a staff level, that maybe it's easier to get, um, you know, flies with honey. And that has changed, because that was a big pushback, and that used to bother me. There was several initiatives, as you well know, Marie, like, the complete streets, that's not such a painful process, but if they had thrown smart growth into complete streets and said, okay, you want this funding, uh, not only do you get a bicycle lane, but we think we, we need, uh, low-income housing, or some kind of assisted living along the street, and, uh, you have to do this, this, and this, and that's what, um, I think has seemed to have gone away. Now, I don't know if that's a result of the new administration in, in Boston, I don't know if it's the, the political sentiment of the, of the, of the Congress, and this is going back well before the current president, but back before that, it seems, there doesn't seem to be that thumb on us anymore, and I think, Stephen, you'll find that, you ask a simple question, you get a simple answer. You don't get the, uh, simple question followed up with a, a, a thick book of mandates of what you should do, um, and usually get an answer, we can do it, or we can't do it. So, Mark, to answer your question, finally, the short and complete, is that I think there's been a, almost a hundred and eighty degree change. I don't see our mandates, we don't see, there, I mean, there are state mandates, of course, with complete streets, there, there's, you know, there's obviously pollution issues, we know there's the green, we have green communities, I mean, we voluntarily did that, that might have been something shoved down our throat ten years ago, uh, but the town accepted that and, and did that, so I think there's a, not the same thumb on our, on us as, as previously perceived.
Tom, if I could just follow up with a quick question, so, my understanding is that, that as a member of the PVPC, we are, I don't know if the right word is entitled, but I'll use that, entitled to a certain number of hours of services of PVPC each year. You know, in your, from your vantage point, are we using those, are we using them appropriately, smartly, and what should we be doing to make sure we use them?
Well, again, it's, it's from the town, it's from our administration level, I think that the town needs to identify where they need assistance or help, I mean, there's some areas we need help, other areas we don't. Steve could probably better address that, and I, and I think he knows exactly what's out there, and that's the, the district level, the DLTA funds, which is, um, very small. We pay, actually, we pay, what, Paul, two thousand something dollars a year in dues?
Four hundred, yeah.
And, and I think the state funds two point eight million to, to cover every town in the state, that's one level of, that's free technical assistance. And then there's, then there's local technical assistance, which is a whole nother level, and that, that's where sometimes they'll match money, or actually just charge a fee to towns for their services, but I don't know, I, like, Stephen could answer probably, what are you, are you presently pursuing any DLTA?
Not right now, I mean, sometimes they'll, um, ask us, or they'll request them to use that money, apply that money for writing a grant, or developing, helping us develop an RFP, or something like that, or do some research. I think we've leveraged it very effectively. You know, the grant that we just, that he just alluded to, the grant application allowed for administration as a part of an eligible expense, so they built the administration, they're basically, their costs into that. But, I mean, usually it's, the, the one thing, and I want to, uh, I want to agree with Walter, PVPC is, has been very good at, at being responsive and relatively nimble, and kind of calling on the short hop and saying, hey, listen, can you help us do this report, or what do you think of the study, or can you help us do this, and they always, they always say yes, and they, and they work with you to try and find a way to get things done. I mean, just, we just did the EV charging station work group- I mean, just, we just did the EV charging station work group. You know, that was a re, you know, they were very good at taking diverse communities and putting them in the same room on this project, and kind of getting a diverse set of opinions. And that draft report showed that they really looked at it in a comprehensive way. So, I, I want to echo what Walter said. I think the agency's been very good to deal with on the, when the, when the casino stuff was going on back in 2013, 2014, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was instrumental in kind of giving, getting everybody in the room and letting them know, you know, basically what the, what the rules were, what the expectation should be, and helping organize a regional approach to a baseline study. And that was, like I said, got us going in the right direction for sure. So, I think, but, and so, Tom and I talked about inviting Walter, there's a lot that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission does that the general public may not be fully aware of, so I think it's good that you're here to promote.
Yeah, though, I think, and then, actually, back to Mark's initial question, I think the casino mitigation was a watershed moment. There was pushback at the commission to get involved with that. They couldn't see what, they, they looked at it as regional impacts. They didn't really want to assist communities. And I think what's interesting is, they saw a regional impact by what could happen to Long Meadow. And so, we got specific attention. I think that's some kind of a, a dynamic shift in, in their policy. It was a rather interesting, we had several discussions on the executive committee about, you know, not getting involved with that mitigation process. They were asked to do that by, by the Gaming Commission. Several interested parties wanted to get the commission in there because they thought of them as an arbitrator. And they didn't want to, because they said, well, regional, we can think of the traffic issues, crime, as a region. But it was interesting that they finally agreed to the, the abutting towns to Springfield got assistance, and were, were very helpful in, in, and it was a regional issue. So, I think it was a positive outcome.
So, Walter, is that a question? In terms of, when you look at the deal Long Meadow got from MGM in terms of funding, I mean, how do we make out? I mean, what would you say?
I think, better than I would have expected.
Better than you would have expected?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
And to get back to your next point about Dwight Road, and that's something we need to look at as a town. I mean, if we want to pursue, I mean, we've voted the money in, we're going to bond it. The question is, if we want to try to apply for CMAC money, and, I hope Tim's not listening to this, because what he wants to do is grab all the CMAC money for Regional Railroad. And this is going to happen very soon. He is going to come to the MPO meeting in the near future and ask that the next two to three years of the congestion mitigation funding be swept in to funding, he wants more railroad trains between Springfield and Greenfield, and that is congestion mitigation. So, you know, alternate transportation, mass transit is, is a viable thing, could cause the pot to go empty. And I really think this Dwight Road, and since we're supposed to have a ready plan delivered, I believe, Steve, wasn't that, we agreed at that with the developer? They were having shovel-ready plan for Converse, Dwight, Williams Street.
They're getting close to being done with design.
And Maple. That is like gold. We take that plan, and we walk into the JTC, which our town engineer would take, and the Joint Transportation Commission would look at that and say, wow, this is already at like 75% ready. That can push us right to the top of the chart. And regardless of whether we've already funded it with a bond or whatever, that CMAC money can become available and free up a lot of cash to Long Meadow. I just, I just see that as an interesting, I've been talking about that for, you know, for a year or two, but it's worth, it's worth a shot. I don't know if, I don't see why not. We're, it's, the road's already been identified as a regional highway. Converse Street was, is the proof of it. That, that's federal money that improved Converse Street to be a corridor between East Long Meadow, Hampden, and Springfield via Long Meadow, and to handle truck traffic. And, and so, the final piece of that puzzle is the Dwight Road, Converse Street, and intersections at East Long Meadow, which is Maple Street and Williams Street, and then over to Chestnut and Denzilow, so.
I actually think we're going through that Philo Meadow Street and Converse and Forest Glen, which was our original casino mitigation. We're in the process that, that design, you heard, we started the design firm. One of our goals is to get that to 75% design as soon as possible.
Yes.
And present that to the JTC as well.
That's huge, because we'll see projects and how they're rated and scored. I, I notice it's usually their level of readiness, and of course, obviously, priority isn't really a, a traffic improvement, a pollution improvement. And this is huge. And it's only, and this is where we come in and assist, so. And I can definitely be a voice on the commission, because I will be up there with Mayor Sarno and Mayor Koss, and everybody is up there looking for money for, the region needs someone in the range of $2 to $3 billion in infrastructure. And I think our, our budget comes in well in the hundreds of millions. I mean, the biggest blip in this was obviously the, the Viaduct improvements on Route 91. I mean, that was extraordinarily huge, and that just, you know, that took a hit on our whole region for other improvements. There's thousands of bridges and Converse Streets and Long Meadow Streets all over, all over the region that need, need updating.
Now, would the commission have any idea of how things are currently? Because right now, the traffic buildup on Converse Street is just out of control. I mean...
You think it's worse because of?
Yeah, it's got worse. Because people were trained to stay to the right, and then people taking a left turn to go to the left. And now, there's just really one lane, and it's backed up all the way to the JCC. And I don't know if we're even getting any data on that, you know, on how, how it's getting backed up. But it's got to be affecting people going to East Long Meadow. It does affect people who are trying to get to the edge of town. But it's definitely affecting other people. And this is one of those classic things, where they all, you know, we, we got a new road, and then the traffic's worse, because that last part isn't finished. And, and so, you know, if we could, you know, again, if it would be a priority, that'd be great. But how would we?
I don't know.
Would we have to collect data on that?
Well, that's an interesting thing. Does the state follow up ever on, on a project? Do they ask to come out and do a post, postmortem on the final construction? I mean, I'm not familiar with that.
I mean, in terms of the quality of the instruction, yes, they did, they, I mean, I think it's, it's been the shifting of the finishing of the 91 project that backs the traffic up. I don't know which direction you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about going, when you come into Long Meadow, down Converse Street towards East Long Meadow, they're packed up to Dickinson Street around, you know, five, of course, the hike, five to six o'clock, you know.
Okay, well, that's probably...
But that's one of the things that we're going to work on as a part of the DIF project.
Right, yeah.
So, the capa, the, the, the intersection capacities will be, will be increased dramatically through that project.
See, and that's the irony of planning, that's, you know, you, you, you want towns to have their own control of projects, and then you have regional planning. And then, we get regional money, so we identify Converse Street as a regional road. And then, East Long Meadow just suddenly goes ahead now and, and starts a water main project. That's going to be, that's your, probably what you're talking about. That's going to be huge. And I understand, because I get the robo-call from my office in East Long Meadow, that's a project going well into January. And that comes around, that's Denzilow, or Benton, I should say, Benton to, I guess it's going to go up Maple Street and connect to Westwood, which makes absolutely, I don't know what they're, they're up to, but that, that's going to be a serious problem now. If we'd started to work on our traffic signalization improvements, and this thing started...
Well, that's why they're doing it now.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
That's good, well, that's what we want to see.
It doesn't delay the bigger project.
I will commend Long Meadow as one thing, is this policy, and the utilities are very familiar with it, that get your utilities in order, because when the asphalt goes down, don't start cutting into the, you know, pavement unless it's a dire emergency.
Or, or the gas company.
Well, I, I think that's what I'm talking about.
Everything's in a dire emergency for them, anyway.
Yeah, so...
Okay, we have a question. Marie?
Yeah, I want to thank you for stepping up. 2008, your leadership down there has really put a seat at the table for Long Meadow, at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So, thank you very much for all the work you've done through the years.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. And, and, you know, it's, I'm still learning. I mean, I, I still have to sit at meetings and have people, you know, give me cheat sheets on what's going on. Jim Zack is the chair of the JTC, and he's been wonderful on, you know, I'm, I'm a complete idiot about transit and transportation, but boy, after being on this, this MPO, I really, you know, get an appreciation for the, the hours and hours of these paid people. And at the Planning Commission, I mean, they have a whole transit and transportation department, and all they do is crunch numbers all day long, and they have to listen to every town screaming about how their project is more important. Especially if you have elected mayors saying, well, my, my office is on the line if, if we don't put in a rotary or put in a new traffic light somewhere. And it's, it's, the stress is phenomenal, I have to admit.
Does that work? Is it, maybe I, I could try, I'll try that.
Of course. Well, you'd say our jobs are on the line.
I think it's a great idea, yes. Never hurts.
Well, I think it's really important for you to be there, because I actually attended a couple of those meetings, and at the end of the year, sometimes there's money sitting on the table.
Exactly.
Unless you're at that meeting saying, I've got the 75%, I'm ready to go, that town misses out. So, you being down there at the meetings, and, and Stephen and our staff being very attentive is huge.
Staff is absolutely extremely important, if you take anything out of this presentation tonight, is that we have to have town representatives at the table, especially in transportation. And this is where we failed. Years and years ago, it was funny, because this, this organization has been around since 1962, but for some reason, Long Meadow never felt any urgency repairing its roads or looking for money. And so, I was, they laughed. When we finally had our, our last town engineer started, Yem started going to these meetings, they're like, wow, Long Meadow's back here. And as a result, we started getting attention to projects that we were in dire need of. So, they, they'll tell you that right up front. If you don't show up, you're not going to get even the first, the first cut at any kind of funding.
Yeah, and instead of just the big projects, I know there's money sometimes on for the small projects. So, I would hope we always have some of the small projects 75% ready to go, whether it's a bike trail down Conservation, or a, a cross-section here. And I know Complete Streets has come up with these. And as long as we have them, some of those 75% designed, you're at the table, you're at the table, we might get funding we don't expect at the end of the year.
Yeah, Complete Streets is a, is sort of a blessing and a curse. I mean, it, it does wonderful things for pedestrians, bicycles, automobiles, general traffic safety, but I think it also jumped the cost. Our, our project on Converse Street, as you well know, went up, I think, a million plus.
I mean, it really doubled.
Just to fine tune it for the complete streets. And then, then that now is a mandate, obviously, for most communities, the actual Mastod is looking for that kind of complete streets projects for most of their work now. So, the money has, you know, is drying up, because fewer projects are getting a lot more money. So, that's, that's the sad part of it at this point. But the good news is, the legislature is on our side. Tim Brennan, who's, you know, the executive director of the Planning Commission, he coasts, he goes to bat. And things like DLTA funding, the governor vetoed, or took it off his budget, the legislature overrode him and put the, put the money back in. And little things like that, not, not sure what the logic was, but nevertheless, things are funded. So far, on the federal government's side, we haven't seen any, any loss of any kind of federal funding. A little bit in mass transit, though. Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, I know, in the last quarter took a hit, and they've had to reduce some service. I don't know if Long Meadow got impacted. Do you know if?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yeah, the, the G5 route going down Long Meadow Street went from, I don't know, every, every couple of hours to once in the morning, once in the night, at night, and the rest of the day, it stops at the Jewish nursing home.
Yeah.
But there's going to be further cuts next year that they've already...
Yeah, and I'm not sure where that's going, how that, they have to fix that. But that's, I mean, obviously, it runs a deficit, and they're constantly looking for, for money.
They're going to raise the rates, the bus rates.
Bus rates, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of pushback about that, so. I think I've gone over 10 minutes, but if you want to...
We weren't timing you, but Marie, you have another question?
One last question.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there anything the select board can do to help you? Is there any program, anything we should be voting in or program or missing out on?
I, I, no, I haven't really seen anything that's come across that's, you know, earth-shattering. I think perhaps down the road, we might look at the, the former DPW site. There might be something we might need to, literally, and I don't want to say dig up, that's probably the wrong word for that, but something we can look into that might help and a use for that.
So, I just want to build on, actually, you can talk about what can the select board do. It really is transactional, in that one of the things I think the select board did in having Walter on the executive committee and keeping us posted on the Converse Street project specifically, one of the things I've learned about the commission is that the level of local readiness is often tough. And if you remember, I think it was the summer before last, when we did that special town meeting to do the takings, then we had to do another special town meeting to do it again.
Mm-hmm, right.
The select board being nimble enough to kind of collect the information of what was needed and put it forward, and being determined enough to do a special town meeting and get that done, so we could be ready for our deadline, was what made that project happen. Because once you lose your spot in line, you drop way down. And so, it's moments like that where the select board did the best it possibly could for the community by making those right-of-way, those easement acquisitions quickly, kind of on the fly. And that was a big help. I mean, like I said, that, that was one of that, things that made it easier for Walter to support at the executive committee level, because he knew we were ready. And I'm sure the same thing's going to come up when we go, when we go forward with Long Meadow Street.
That's true. I think that, that's a good point, because these things, there's, there's no long-range master plan. This isn't like, you know, China. There just isn't any, it just pops up. We had a member of the, the fire chief got the, the generators on a grant. Remember the, for the Greenwood? And that just popped out of the clear blue. The, the regionalization, the 9/11 thing sort of just appeared. And we've always been a big proponent of regionalization. It works and it doesn't work. I mean, you have a school district in, you know, Chicopee, I mean, in Southwick and Granville, you got the one in Hampden that's now disintegrating. So, you know, regional, I know, the future of regional police and, you know, fire departments is a tough one. But those are little things there that, that are, that come along, and, you know, they're, they seem painless and hopefully save the taxpayers a lot of money down the road and become more efficient. But that's it, be reactive. You never know. You might get a, Steve might sit down in a meeting and say, wow, we just, we just got, and we, and you need to, you know, think about it and work on it. The Converse Street thing was scary, because I was getting memos from the head of the Transportation Section, the Planning Commission, saying we were going to lose our funding. It literally was on the hook. If Long Meadow didn't do what it did, and we had the special town meeting, we got the right-of-ways, Pat voted for, and literally got in under the clock. Because at that point, as you know, the federal fiscal year ends September 30th, and we were right down to like having it all sliced off and given to somebody else. So, that's credit to you, to you folks.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad we had good questions for you.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Did a nice job of preparing and answering them.
Okay.
If, and there's any other questions or comments? If not, I guess we will just thank you, and look forward to seeing you again in the future.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good evening.
Take care, good night.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Walter. So, we can move on to old business. We have minutes to approve for, we can start with October 2nd meetings, minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Some, some.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, discussion, yeah.
Yeah, Marie, there's a sec, no, Debbie, there's a section that refers to the racket club, and I would think, I was hoping we could just modify that to say Grand Meadows Racket Club, so that it differentiates it from the racket club that's on Wool Swamp Road. It's just be an addition that's, where it starts about, talking about the racket club, it would say Grand Meadows Racket Club.
Okay, and make it more specific?
Yeah.
So, that's a modification, if that's, so, if everyone's okay with that, can we, did you?
We're getting ready to vote.
Oh, you're ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor? Okay.
I abstained.
And you want to abstention? Okay, October 16th, regular meeting minutes, motion to approve? Okay, second?
I have to pass, I'm in there.
That's all right. Okay.
Just a quick comment. There's a article, discussion about our review of Article 5. It says the final vote was three to one. I think we're supposed to say who voted opposed to it. I believe it was me. If you just can indicate, Mr. Gold voted against it, that will be complete with that correction.
Yeah, and that would, that would be me. I was against it.
No, it was me.
It was on, oh, Article?
Article 5.
Oh, 5, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my fault.
I thought I meant to buy the other law. Okay. Okay, if that's the only change, then all those who are in favor? Aye, okay, one opposed, or one abstention? One abstention. Okay, October 20th?
Motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, the header says the meeting, or I guess the header says the meeting was at 6 o'clock when it was at 5 o'clock. So we just have to change the header at the top to represent that the meeting was at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Any, no other amendments? All those in favor? Okay.
I abstain.
Anyone abstention? Okay. And.
That's a motion. We approve the minutes for the November 13th, 2017 special meeting.
Okay, November 13th special meeting, a second on that?
I second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And we just need to do November 6th.
We missed November 6th?
I thought we were doing November 6th.
No, we just did it November 13th.
Oh, okay.
But you weren't there, Marie.
I was going to say, I was looking at November 6th.
That's a motion. We approve the minutes for November 6th, 2017 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thanks.
I abstain for the 13th.
Well, you actually said you were there.
I was? He just said I wasn't there. Let's see. Was I there?
I thought you, you missed the special meeting.
Yeah, no, the 13th I was not there, so I abstain from the 13th. I voted yes for the 6th.
Channeling Admiral Stockdale.
All right, great, we didn't miss any of those. And we have to go to vote for the fire truck bond extension, the term of the bond extension. I guess, should we ask Paul to just refresh our minds on that?
Sure. At the November 6th meeting, you may recall, I brought forward a recommendation from our financial advisor to increase the duration of the fire truck bonding from five to 10 years. The statute automatically allows for five years, and the select board has an option, should they so desire, to increase that duration up to the useful life of, of the asset. In this particular case, the fire truck. That useful life could easily be up to 20 years. Financial advisor, and I agree with the financial advisor, to make a recommendation for this board to increase that up to 10 years. And it's basically only for flexibility purpose, should there be some high demands on that short-term principal bond retirement budget that we currently have at $183,000. At the time, there was a question about when that vote actually had to be taken. Bond counsel did get back to me, and that vote needs to be taken certainly by the, by the first principal payment that is made on that ban that we recently approved on the purchase of that fire truck. Now, it was my intention, there's $19,000 left in the budget, that that first principal payment would be made May 30th, 2018. I don't have to make that payment at that point in time, but there is, there is a budget for it. And technically, if we did not, we could actually postpone this vote up until the time. We make our first principal payment, which would have to be done no greater than three years out. So again, it's my recommendation for flexibility purpose to increase that duration that the town can borrow on that fire truck from five to 10 years. That will also get, we can get a jumpstart on paying it off. And again, it would still be my full intention to pay it off in five years as long as there's no extreme demands on the budget. And we can manage that and make sure that it happens. But I think that summarizes what really had transpired that evening two weeks ago. And I'm open to some questions, if there are any further questions on the matter.
Okay. Are you, okay, Mark, yeah?
I'm not sure these are really questions so much as just to clarify my understanding. So I just want to use round numbers, Paul. The fire truck, give or take, is $500,000, right?
We borrowed 530.
500, okay. So, so paying it off over five years is about $100,000 a year. Paying off it at 10 years is about $50,000 a year. So the difference is $50,000, give or take. So if, if we, because this is not an exclusionary bond, if we pay it off over a longer period of time, it opens up, if you will, $50,000 in our town budget for other things.
Correct.
So, and so I understand the reason why you, we may want to do that. What I guess I don't understand is, and here's the question coming up, is why the bond council needs to get involved with this? When, why can't we wait and see if we need that $50,000 in, in, in our current budget before we say we're going to reduce our bond of the fire truck by 50 so we can spend $50,000 on X, Y, or Z?
In essence, we can wait by not making a bond payment in May of 2018. But by statute, we have to make a bond payment within three years of the initial bond. So there's no control, we can delay this up to three years if we so desire, is the bottom line.
Right, but, but we borrowed, we borrowed this, I mean, we've already approved the ban, so we've borrowed the money, right? So our payment is due. I mean, does, does the owner of the bond care that the payment is for a fire truck or for something else? I mean, we're not reducing the size of the bond by extending it to 10 years. So we're not changing the payment that we.
Well, I.
It's just a matter of whether we make the payment, if you will, and correct me if I'm wrong. If the $100,000 we make when that first payment comes up, if all of it's for the fire truck, or 50 of it's for the fire truck, and 50 of it's for some, some other project, no?
The lending institution really does not care.
Right, and so it's all, it's only us who cares.
They may get more interest on it anyway.
I'm sorry?
They're getting a little bit more interest on it.
Well, again, what would happen is, as, as, you know, the trend is now the rates are going higher, we're going to end up paying a little bit more. And if, if, if we wait three years and do not extend it to 10 years at that point in time, we are now locked into paying that $530,000 over two-year period. Because the clock starts ticking when we initially take the first ban issue or bond issue, which we took out in November of 2017.
But we're paying that off starting immediately, right?
We have that choice, Mark. I have $19,000 in the budget to begin a paydown on that.
Right.
I don't have to make that $19,000 payment.
So we, we borrowed $500,000 on a ban, and you're saying, and we don't have to make a first payment on it for three years?
That is correct, almost three years.
Well, this is just to give you the flexibility. It makes perfect sense to me.
Good.
And Marie?
Is the difference between a bond anticipation note, and you're talking about going into a full 10-year bond?
No, I am not talking about going to a full-year, 10-year bond. My, my projection is to keep on rolling these bond anticipation notes so that we have the flexibility and pay off a portion of them as if they were a permanent bond issue.
Okay.
But with a bond anticipation note, as opposed to a permanent bond issue, a permanent bond issue is going to have us locked in with certain principal payments and so on and so forth. With a bond anticipation note, instead of paying $50,000 a year, if we have 60, we'll pay 60. If we only have 40, we'll pay 40. But by the end of that five- or 10-year term, we have to make sure that it's fully paid off. That's all, but we still have flexibility within that window.
So we're not changing, we're actually just, you're just saying this is your anticipation to pay it off in 10 years rather than five? Though you're just still rolling these bond anticipation notes?
It's my anticipation to pay it off in five. This just gives me the option, if something else comes up budgetarily, instead of making a $100,000 payment, we can pay 50, and we would have $50,000 for some other budgetary need. But that would not be my intent to do that, only have the option.
Okay. And the other argument with that is that, you know, as you mentioned, I'm just repeating what you said, is that if interest rates go up in three years, that then we'd be paying higher.
We'd be paying more interest on the debt.
Is there any other questions?
It's not a question, I'm just a comment. I guess, because I haven't seen the need for the, for this flexibility, and I don't understand this need for the flexibility, I, I think we're better off sticking to our original plan of paying it off in five years. That would be.
But that, that's what he tends to do. This is just in, have some flex, what's wrong with having some flexibility?
Because it costs you money to have that flexibility.
Well, he's not intending to.
Only if the flexibility is exercised.
Well, and, and my sense is that, you know, as time expands to fill the, or work expands to fill the time available, you know, we're going to find that, gee, wouldn't it be nice for somebody else to come along and say, "We'd like to add $50,000 to our town budget, and select board, you can do that because you gave us a $50,000 window, just move the fire truck out there, you know, five more years." And, and I don't know who's going to put their, their dibs in for $50,000, but history has proven that a lot of people do put their dibs in for $50,000 if it's available. And I, I see it as a, as a way of creating $50,000 more to spend in the, in the overall town budget, I think, that we may or may not want to spend.
Okay, oh, Marie, please.
I think that we're not talking about spending on discretionary things. We were just told our budget's getting tighter and tighter and tighter every year. We're running into all sorts of serious issues, and we're talking about running into that wall. Giving our CFO a little bit of flexibility, I don't think it's going to be a trivial need. I think as every year, and it could hit us this year, depending on who's asking for rebate, what is it called? You ask for your taxes.
Abatements.
Abatements, depending where abatements come in, that could be a serious issue. So I'm all for giving you a little flexibility. I'm sure you'll report to us on, you know, where you end up doing it because you're really trying to keep these bond anticipation notes all in the air and floating where they need to float. So I'll just look for reports from you, but I respect your need in having that little flexibility.
I think what Steve and I can do is make it a point to bring that, that whole issue forward when we do present an FY '19 budget as to exactly where it stands and do it annually until we have that fire truck paid off.
Okay.
Can I just ask another question?
Is it, okay.
Yeah. Why can't we start making payments now, which you anticipate doing $19,000? And if in March or April or when budget time comes along and we need the $50,000, go at that point, say, "We know where to find that because we absolutely have it," and make the change at that point? Why?
You, you, again, that first principal payment, the bond that we just took out is not, ban that we just took out is not due till May 30th. If you would like to postpone this until April, you certainly could do that to make that exact decision. And if your decision is still to make a payment of $19,000, then we'd, we'd be locked in at five. But you could also say, "We need that money now, so we're going to use it in the 19 budget. Paul, do not pay that $19,000 in May."
So the ban is a five-year ban, is what you're saying?
No, and the ban only goes out to May 30th of 2018. But historically, we roll them.
Right, so we've got to pay this one off by May 30th, 2018, and get another one.
Well, when you say pay it off, now we're not going to reduce the principal. We're going to roll another ban for something.
Roll it over to another ban, so.
Yes.
But, but it shouldn't preclude us from making a payment, it wouldn't seem to me, between, in this fiscal year.
If we make a payment.
You just roll it over to a slightly smaller ban, $19,000 less.
Exactly.
Right, so.
But.
That's why I don't understand why we need to.
If we do not take this vote, and I make a principal payment, on May 30th, 2018, we are locked in at a five-year duration.
Locked into what for a five-year duration?
We have to have that $530,000 ban paid off in five years if you do not take a vote and I make a principal payment.
No, why is that?
That's the statute. So.
Is this what you need read, that whole thing, by the clerk?
Yes.
I read it two weeks ago. I have to read it again?
Yes.
You can't just say "as written."
There's different dates.
As read?
Yeah, Stephen, and then hold on for the.
So, just to mark, I don't, I'm probably not going to change your mind on it, but just to go back through the timeline of this. Paul was asked by bond counsel to present this to the select board for a vote. We had some questions, we. You all had some questions that you wanted us to answer, namely, what was the deadline on this? And to bring it back at a next meeting. This is why it is back today. When we first brought it to you, we did not know what the deadline was. So the deadline is further out. I don't, I agree with Paul that having the flexibility, whether you vote on it now or vote on it April, it's really immaterial. But doing it now is important. And this is certainly an item that we will highlight in the town manager's budget because I think it's, he and I are on the same page. It's our intent and our desire, in fact, to keep it a five-year term because we do want to decrease interest costs and pay off debts as soon as we possibly can. But, so, and I think the way we, based on the projections we made back in October, I think we'll be able to do that. But we don't know what's going to happen in FY '20, in FY '21, in FY '22. And that's why we're saying, but you have to make that decision for the flexibility this year, in here and now. And so that's where I, I, our hope is that it doesn't end up costing us any money. But our hope is that having the flexibility will prevent us from having to cut something else that's important to us. And it's not a lot of money, but.
It's a lot of money, $50,000, a lot of money.
You know, hitting the finish line on the budget always comes down to five and 10 Gs here and there. And so that's where I support the flexibility. The timing of it is such that the rules dictate that we have to do it this way. And it's going to be five years until, until there's a need. And if, if it becomes a need, we'll present the board with that need proposition, and the board can make the decision whether they want to go to five to 10, or make the offset.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Let's go on. Do you have a motion for the board?
I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Long Meadow, Massachusetts, certified that a meeting of the board held November 20, 2017, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following vote was unanimously passed. I don't know that.
You don't know that?
All of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of the fire truck to be financed with the proceeds of the $530,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed October 25th, 2016. Article 11 is hereby determined pursuant to general law C 4471 to be 10 years. I further certify that the vote was taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, and time of the meeting was filled with the, filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in the office of the town clerk or on the principal official bulletin board of the town at least 48 hours, not including Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the vote were taken in executive session, and that the official record of the meeting was made available to the public promptly and remains available to the public, all in accordance with general law C 30A 18-25 as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I have another question. Paul, is this sort of like prepay on a mortgage? You're going five, you're planning on paying it in five, but you got the authorization to go 10?
You know, if I'd call it prepayment on a mortgage, because those are kind of locked amounts on a mortgage. We have flexibility on how we can pay this. And, and this is trying to pay it ASAP, which is prepayment on a mortgage. Like in theory, that's what we're just trying to accomplish through the budgetary.
But you'll save proportion, if you pay it off.
A lot of flexibility.
You pay it off in seven years, you've paid less interest than you've paid off in 10.
Right, exactly.
So you're like prepaying, so.
Right, right, exactly. The quicker we pay it off, the less interest we're going to pay.
Right.
Tom, two, two questions, one operational, one, one. Paul, why is the bound, you know, I mean, we floated a lot of, or have taken out a lot of bans over the years, and bond council has never interceded before in talking to us about the terms of bans, or, why, why now?
In this particular case, I believe it was from the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act that took effect a year ago. Otherwise, those amounts would have been locked with no options as far as, as the, the local government is concerned. You probably would have had an authorization for a fire truck that would have been 20 years. It's useful life of, of the vehicle, and that's how the statutes were. The statutes were modified, and it now says that anything, any borrowing for equipment, which a fire truck is, is automatically five years, but gives the local chief executive officers the option to increase it to the useful life. And that's basically what we're talking about here. But it was something, again, the Municipal Modernization Act took effect a year ago.
Okay. And just an operational question, I don't know who can answer this, but the motion said the following vote was unanimously passed. That's the motion. I think the motion needs to be amended, just to say, because what if it's not unanimously passed?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
I mean, it seems to me that the motion has nothing to do with that first paragraph. When in fact, the motion ought to be.
It was passed.
What?
It was passed by majority.
Yes, right.
Whatever, it may be.
Majority, passed by majority versus unanimously.
I think the date has to be changed on the bottom also.
And the date would have to be changed. So, so...
It's November.
All right. So, we would make that amendment.
Mine says the twentieth.
I'm sorry, I have the old one in. I'm sorry. My issue.
Bill, do you want to amend that? And I'll second that.
So, we would be amend, amend the motion to say that this motion was passed by majority vote and the date at the bottom would be today's date.
It is already the twentieth.
It is the twentieth.
I must, I have the old version.
You know what? I'm going to end up voting for it. I don't know how other people are, so it's going to end up passing unanimously. So, don't go through this.
Oh, okay.
Just manipulation. I just was concerned.
All right.
You're just trying to be typical.
No, I'm not trying to be tough, but it's a...
Accurate.
It's easier to pass unanimously than go back and amend the motion.
Well, it'll sound good. But we need to take a vote.
We won't know until we vote.
That's right.
We won't know until we take a vote. And all those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, so we're all set for the wording.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thanks to our clerk for doing a nice job reading all that. And now, we look at, we did get a continuation of liquor license application, which was accepted and withdrawn, or says except withdrawal. Now, we need to open...
We had tabled the hearing. I'd like to just make a motion that we close the hearing and withdraw it from our, from our agenda. That will, in essence, accept their request for us to withdraw the application.
Okay. Is there a second to...
Second.
Okay. And then, all those in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay.
Do we know why?
It looks, yeah, it was so screwed up, they're going to submit another one.
Yeah, they submitted a brand new, they submitted a brand new application.
Brand new question, okay.
Then try to amend that.
Like me with the compact communities, they are also rebooting.
Okay.
It was a mess.
So, we have new business, holiday trash amnesty consideration. I know we've done this in the past. And the request is for us not to produce any trash or...
Yeah.
Request is for us to allow additional...
An extra bag.
An extra bag.
During the holidays.
Two bags.
And is it...
Is it two bags?
No.
No, there's the original bag and an extra bag. And is, yeah, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that for the weeks of, I think it's from December twenty-sixth through January sixth, whatever that is, that we allow up to a second trash, thirty-two gallon trash container for all homes in residential trash collection.
Second.
Second. Happy holidays. Any vote on that? We'll just say happy holiday vote.
Happy holiday vote.
Those in favor? Okay, great. And then, we go to sign requests on the new business. And one is from Saint Mary's Craft Fair. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll move, we approve the petition from Saint Mary's for the positioning of their sign in, for the, I guess, what, it's an extra week for their craft fair sign.
Second.
A second, okay. All those in favor? Okay, approved. And...
And we approved these last year. We excluded the triangle. Is that... Are we doing that or are we...
The triangle down here by the plaza?
No. We want to buy with the shops, right?
Yeah, the big way.
Is approval for all the places in the town that we normally do or is it...
That's where, that's the way it was.
Why did we do that?
I don't know.
I'm sure there's, well, that last year's was different.
We were on an anti-sign kick, weren't we?
Not much gets bypassed, gets passed, Deb. Thank you for reminding us of that. But I guess there's no complaints this year about it, so we'll move forward. It's already voted on. And First Church, Christmas on the Green, sign request. Do we have a motion?
No, I'll move, we approve the First Church's Christmas green fair for sign from November twenty-fifth to December second.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And now, we have subcommittee reports from the Energy Task Force. Marie?
Yes, I have actually three reports. The first one, the Energy Task Force, I sent last year's report to everyone. We're looking to update it and make some changes. If anyone had any input they wanted to give it, give us, we'll probably be coming back in December, but December sounds pretty busy for you guys, maybe January, and give an updated goals and what's been accomplished and where we're going. So, I sent electronic version out on that. And regards to Scampic Valley, I got some statistics from Paul, and I thought I'd pass these out to everyone. I know it gives an idea of what our health insurance expenses have been over the past few years. And in addition, I had asked him some numbers in regards to the retirement that I'm sure Mark already has, so I just decided to throw that in the packet. We have another meeting tomorrow. There's several issues on the table and how to decrease health insurance costs. I think I reported on that before, such as healthcare trusts and some other aspects and expansion of the wellness program. So, I'll have more reports for you after tomorrow's meeting. And the last thing I just wanted to report on was COA. We had a very lively meeting this past week. And a big concern they have is the revolving account, that there's been talk about putting in down there because right now, whenever there's an event, the money goes that people pay for their, their card games or even their meals, and it goes to Faloka, and then Faloka pays it back. And there's been talk for a long time about changing that system because it really evolved from an old system. And I think that Paul Pasturjik has been liaising down there and talking to them, and I'm hoping that we'll be seeing that on the next town meeting. And there's strong support throughout the COA in getting that done. I also wanted to state that what Jim, the new director, has been able to do is get a lot of companies and organizations in town to sponsor programs. And he started evening programs. And the first evening program he had was sponsored by Jewish Geriatric Services, and it was Ray of Elvis, an evening concert, and it was very popular. Eighty people showed up. In fact, they had to turn away a lot of people. And I don't think a lot of companies in town understand that sponsorship abilities, and it gives a lot of goodwill to their company and some wonderful programming down there. Very excited to see them start to have the evening programs because they're trying to transition to get the working seniors to come down and enjoy the activities down there. I know they do ski trips, they do, they did other trips around the area, but this is evening concerts, which I thought was very nice. And that's all the reports on the three organizations.
Okay. I just want to comment on, because in the report from the constellation, it also said that Jim Leiden had gone to training at Bay Path on Alzheimer's, and that's money well spent, for sure. Glad to hear that. Now, the other thing I had about your report is when you talked about the Energy Task Force, it mentioned a funding, five thousand dollars for the transition committee. Was that, is that still something that's still...
Well, no. One of the things, no, one of the things is we asked, I think every year we've been asking for two thousand dollars in the budget from the select board and the school committee liaison is supposed to ask for two thousand dollars from the school budget. Because the programs that we're putting together are to help energy conservation for the town and the schools, and the schools are still paying for their own energy consumption. It's on their side of the budget. There's been a lot of talk about moving it and consolidating it. And even though the school committee right now has worked together with the town manager and they've been doing some joint bidding, they, the last person that was on it felt it was important for the schools to also have conservation of energy. So, they've been trying to get two thousand dollars in their budget, too.
And was it funded last year?
I think, no, last year with the two thousand and seventeen, I'm not sure is when we first approached the schools board, and so, we're probably looking for it to happen. So, we're going to go through this and I'll tell you what our goals were achieved, and I'll be able to tell you in December, January, when the task force comes to make a presentation on where the, if the money did come through and what we're able to do. So, I'll be able to report that completely. Right now, the school committee doesn't really have, have not appointed anyone. There's supposed to be two spots. But Jess Hutchins is on the Green community, and she said she would work with me.
Okay.
And so, I'll be, I'll be going over the goal sheets with her, and she'll be reporting to the school committee.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. Mark, did you have something?
Just a totally different subject.
Oh.
That's not a committee report.
Oh.
If it's just select board, I don't know, comments or whatever it is.
All right, it's late for a comment.
No, well, it's not a comment. Well, at the beginning of the meeting, we had people before us, the developers of the Young Brewer Mansion, suggest that they come before us at our next select board meeting for a presentation. And generally, my understanding is that that would be done if the select board needed to get a better understanding for actions we were, we needed to take. But in this case, I don't believe there's any actions that the select board can take relative to their proposal or their petition. It's a, it's a town meeting proposal, a town meeting petition, other than approve the town meeting. And if they come forward with enough votes or enough signatures, we have no, we're obligated to call it a town meeting. And so, you know, because of the contentious nature or potentially contentious nature of this, you know, one thing we could say is, well, if they're going to get a chance to select, address the select boards, so should people from the other side get a chance to address the select board, in which case, it doesn't become, there's, there's no purpose to try and influence us other than they're speaking to the audience at home. And if that's the case, maybe this ought to be done through a, through a town forum and give them a chance to actually speak to the residents of the town. But coming to forward to speak to the members of the select board serves no purpose other than to give them a platform to speak to the people of the town. We're not being, we can't be asked to make a decision. We can't be asked to take action on that. So, you know, for their request that they come before the select board, I'd almost say it ought to be, you know, and I'm happy to endorse it and support it and attend a townwide forum, but to have it take up time at our select board meeting without giving other people a chance to do the same thing because we're not going to take any action, we're not being expected to take any action, seems to me to be out of order relative to what actions the select board ought to be.
Okay.
Give you, that was some thought.
Now, you know, this is, this request has been in the wings for a while.
But it's, but if it's out of order...
Excuse me, I'm talking.
If it's out of order, it's out of order.
I believe I'm talking. I was talking. And what I was saying is, at the last time we discussed this, I don't know if you were at the meeting, but I had said that there are going to be opposition, you know, oppositional forces who will want to say stuff. And I just clarified at that point in time that any folks who felt, you know, there was, they didn't want, did not want to support this zoning, that they would need to speak during resident comments, you know, that they would have an opportunity, and that would be the only opportunity. And I just reviewed that with the board at the time. Now, yes, you know, should this be a community forum? I guess it's something we could open up for discussion, but I don't know if we can open for discussion on the agenda.
The chair can put anything on the agenda you want, based on the necessity of, of an issue. And it did come up tonight.
It came up tonight, so we can discuss it further? Or is there any, no objection to that?
I don't think, because chair has that authority. Mark brought up a good point, in all honesty. It is a valid point.
Yeah.
I saw it today because I see all the commotion going on. We're not going to vote on this issue. We have no bearing. This will be, this will be decided at the town meeting.
Right.
And it's, it's a valid point that if we entertain, well, of course, this group came to us and asked to make the presentation. No one else has come to us to make the presentation, but if you center it right on down, it's not a select board issue.
Right.
And for us to take our time as a select board meeting in front of the public, it, maybe it is a disservice to the public because these organizations should be setting up and doing a forum.
Yeah.
So, I agree with, I agree with Mark's point on this. It's, this is a little bit different than most circumstances, Tom.
Yeah. Well, then, we have had folks come and read letters and just state their feelings about this issue. It is going to be a big decision for the town. And when I look at, one of the functions of this meeting is for people in the public to be informed about the issues and what are the concerns. And so, you know, they asked to come and they can inform the public, and people who are in opposition to their zone change can also inform the public. If there's, should be an open forum in the community, I think that can happen in addition to this. But there are a lot of folks who may depend on this meeting and the television to understand what's going on because they are not going to go and attend anything else, and they have several times during the week to at least hear the arguments, and I hope they'll be on both sides, but we can't, you know, I don't know. So, that was my feeling about it, is that, you know, we want people to be informed when they make this vote because it is an important decision. And it's not our decision. I agree. It's not our decision. You know, it's a town, and it really comes down to one way or the other. Either the house stays or the house is gone, so...
Yeah, but it's not our, it's not our obligation to educate the public or provide a format for this education to take place. This is, goes back to the developer's obligation.
Yeah.
And it is a fine line. I agree. But I mean, we could just as soon have an animal rights organization in here next week. I mean, the list could be just unbelievably long of items that are irrelevant to the actions of this board. So, I, I think we do provide a public forum because we are the government, we're the executive branch of the town, but we're talking about town business, and that particular element is not actual town business. That right now is just a proposal that somebody has. We don't even have a town meeting scheduled. So, I mean, there's, take it, take it in advisement. I mean, I share, I share with Mark's feelings on it.
Well, at some point, there will be a town meeting scheduled because we don't have any choice about if we can have a town meeting or not. And at that point, you know, I would just want residents to know that we're being transparent, transparent about what's going on and that people are included in, in hearing the arguments. And, but, you know, it does bring up an interesting point because it's just the people who are proposing this who would have an opportunity to speak in this meeting, and I, you know, I think that's worth discussing further. Marie?
Well, I think when we had the extension of stops and Steve Walker came in, he showed the presentation, I think as leaders of the community, we should have the issue presented. I can understand Mark's feelings that there needs to be more of an open discussion that we don't really have in select board meetings. So, maybe once the town meeting's set, we would want to have, let's say, a town forum. If you want to begin at seven, it ends at seven thirty, eight o'clock, and then the select board meeting begins. And that way, as leaders of the community, we're sharing the information. We're being fully informed. I don't, I don't feel informed fully for what's going to happen. I'd love to see what the plans are. The planning board, I understood, has had a presentation. And this is the way people learn about things, is that during our meetings. So, if you want to bifurcate it a bit and have it open in a different format from the select board, I'd say, fine. But I think there is a place for this, this board in some way to disseminate information about a town meeting that we're setting up. So, I would like to see it in some...
We're not setting it up.
Yeah, we are voting in the words.
We are not voting. We will be petitioned. We will not have a voice in matter.
But I think we have to vote to accept the petition to send the town more.
So, there's going to be...
We must vote to accept. Okay, so, well, is there...
Yeah, no, but we still have to do it. Yeah, no, but we still have to do it.
All right. I guess before I go to you, Stephen, any other, Bill, you're, as a board member, do you have any comments that you want to make before?
No, but I do agree that both proponents and opposition have to have equal, you know, time in front of the camera. A forum would be way more appropriate.
Okay, great. And so, Stephen, maybe you could even address the forum issue. I don't know if that's something that we can mandate to someone who's proposing a zone change?
I think you can strongly encourage them.
Yeah.
I think if I could slice and dice this a little more specifically, if it would help, because I, you know, Mark, I kind of agree with you. I mean, we, sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't. But on this thing, we don't do it on citizens' petitions. We don't have people who make citizens' petitions for the warrant come in here and air out their citizens' petition generally. This is a little different in that it's a petition for a special meeting, but not much. And I think that the board does have certain obligations that unfold once you receive that petition. You're going, and it's going to have to be a warrant, it's going to have to be a warrant Should that presentation or should that request turn into a public forum and a debate on the merits of the application or of the proposal? Probably not here. I, I would agree with that sentiment. That is a, a public forum type thing, but ultimately, that's a debate for the legislative branch, town meeting. However, is it reasonable to say, someone's coming and petitioning us to put together a warrant for a special town meeting and we want to, we want them to present to us specifically what they're looking for in the warrant article without debating the merits of that proposal? I think it's, I think it's fine to say, what specifically are you asking us for? Limit how much they can do in terms of talking about the benefits of the proposal and we keep it just, here's the zoning designation we're requesting, here's the parcels being requested, here's what it means, here's our parking study, you know, all that, all those type of, just like the same type of information that we present to the Planning Board and not get into, are we going to tear it down? Are we not going, I mean, all that other stuff. I think the board can do that in a very focused way and meet its obligation vis-à-vis scheduling the town meeting without having it turn into a contentious community forum. It's just going to have to be relatively tightly managed discussion.
And I guess I would say that if, you know, if we were in the town of Islaun, which has a town council that meets, that is legislative body, they would have to probably have an open discussion from both sides of this petition because they vote and they make the difference. In this case, we do not vote and make a difference on this. This is all going to start. So, you know, I would think in this situation, you know, folks who are in opposition to this presentation would have to be prepared to come and make a presentation during the residents' comments section, you know. But we wouldn't be able to have an open debate between both sides until we had a town meeting and that's the place that's traditionally taken place in our community, right?
But if you have a presentation by this group, you're going to have to allow a presentation by the other group if they want to make it. Well, if you're going to let them address the Select Board, then you've got to let the other group address the Select Board.
Well, they always have that option to do during resident comments.
I mean, not just do resident comment, no.
Well.
They're going to come, they can come and make the same request of this board to come make a presentation. And if we grant this one, we're going to have to grant the other.
Let me ask you this, though.
Yes.
Because I guess the way I saw that is if they're coming in, and the reason I was trying to kind of parse it a little bit, but in, to get us down to the specifics, I guess, Richard, would you view it, though, that someone coming in with a petition for a special town meeting is a specific thing they're asking for? Whereas the people who are, because the problem is if they come in, then they are, then the, the subject for discussion on the floor of the Select Board meeting is whether or not to accept this petition, schedule this special town meeting. And so, the people who would be here would be only talking about should there be a meeting or not, not should there be a zone change or not. And that's what I'm trying to get to. I think, and if the board just decides, long-term preservation partners, give us their signatures and your specific request in writing and we'll take it under, and we'll make a decision at whatever meeting you guys are going to do it at. We don't need a presentation. You could probably do that as well, but are you going to have residents who feel like you should be hearing from them and hear why they're asking for it? That's the question you guys have to answer yourselves.
And this is, their scheduled visit for us is prior to their meeting with the zoning?
Planning.
With planning?
Yeah. You would be Monday, then Planning Board would be Wednesday. So, the fourth, then the, well, whatever the, yeah, fourth and then the sixth.
Right. So, again, their presentation, their comments have already been heard by the Conservation, or no, the Preservation Commission, right?
No. In a vague kind of way, yeah.
But I thought they had a vote on it.
Not, it was more of a consensus that they liked the concept, not a specific, like, governmental act.
Okay. So, but they've done, presented to one committee that we've, have appointed people to, and they're going to be seeing another committee that we appoint people to, the Planning Committee. And so, it would seem natural that they would have a place at the table here. And I see that differently compared to folks who are not going before those other committees that are town committees. So, I guess that's why I would say, you know, I would disagree with you, Richard, in saying that folks who are in opposition to this would be able to be on the agenda. I think that they could always come and speak as residents.
Those people, those people have an obligation to those other committees, not to us.
Can I ask?
We're more isolated, probably.
Is that normally the procedurally what happens is they're specifically asking us for special town meeting and that's the purpose that they're coming here to?
They're not asking, if they were coming here and petitioning for us to, to call a special town meeting, that's a whole different issue than they've got the requisite number of signatures that says there will be a special town meeting. That's very, very different. And I recognize, then they're asking us to do something. They're before the Planning Commission because the Planning Commission needs to take an action on their, their proposal. They need to vote whether in favor or how to address it or whatever it is. Same with the Historical District Commission, I believe. But we have no action that we are obligated to take and that, that was my point. The other thing, Tom, I just like to say is, one difference is, and one of the things, you know, today we got away from it a little bit, but generally, residents' comments have historically and been limited to, what, two minutes? Something like that. It's a far, you know, so yes, anybody can, resident of town can come in and for two minutes, tell us what's on their mind, whatever it is, and we will listen to it. But we, but it's not a discussion or an argument, not, Stephen, I like your approach that says if they're talking to us about, you know, you know, why there should be a meeting and what they're proposing at the meeting, that's very different from arguing the, the point, which is to be argued at the, at the town meeting, whether or not there should be a zone change. Talk about the meeting, talk to us why you're calling this special meeting and what, what the Select Board needs to do or what the Select Board should do. We hope that you, Select Board, will approve this special meeting, even though we know you don't, you're obligated by law to do so. But, but don't argue the merits of the, because there's, whether I'm for it or against it, doesn't matter. I'm not in a position, we're not in a position to take any action. The Planning Commission is, I believe the Historic District Commission is, but we're not. So, and, and I'm just concerned about this issue of fairness that says, are we giving a forum to people in a contentious position? That was my whole point of bringing this up, Tom.
Right. And again, well, I just say, you've, you've been on the board as long as anybody, probably longer. And, and we run into this sort of a challenge before for you, I mean, where you've had, you know, concerns about people presenting. I mean, has this ever, has there been any, like, you know, I don't know.
But for the, but for the most part, those folks have, have, you know, and I'll give you an example, group homes.
Yes.
Okay? The Select Board had decisions to be made or votes to be taken.
Yeah.
So, this is one of the few things that have, that I can remember coming before us. We have no vote to be taken here.
Okay.
They're not, they're not trying to influence our vote because we have no vote.
Right.
You know, we're the, some of the other people in the past were trying to ask us for, whether it's a zone change or support something or whatever. So, that, that I see as the distinction, Tom. It's not that I'm not interested. I think we're really interested, but we'll end up sitting here for an hour and at the end saying, okay, but we didn't do anything. We just used, used our airways to inform the people in town.
Well, that's, that is a good question, yeah.
Well, maybe when they come in, we should suggest they make a short presentation of what their, their meeting is when they bring in the petition signatures. And tell them there's, you know, just a short explanation of what they're asking for and then they show the materials they'll give to the Select Board. I think we should be informed on what the town meeting is. I don't want to sit there and say, well, I don't want to know anything about it.
Right. But I don't want, Marie, but I don't want them coming here with architectural drawings and all that. I got to tell you, I'm sitting here saying, I got better things to do than sit here and listen to stuff that I can't impact. And, and it's not that I'm not interested, but they're going to have to do that all over again at a town forum somewhere else. So, you know, why are they going to show us architectural drawings and, and long-term plans and all that? Don't make the argument to us, we're not voting. Make the arguments to the people at home at the appropriate time. They're the ones who have to vote.
Leave this in your hands, Tom. That's why you get the big bucks.
That's why I get the big, there's no extra money if you're the Chair of this committee.
One more thing, because I, I hear what you guys are saying and I think there's, and I'm trying to, like I said, kind of cut the fine line, as you will, because I do think there is, there are specific things the Select Board has to do that aren't related to the merits of the proposal. And that's what I'm trying to get to is distill what, what I think the board needs to do without getting into a contentious argument about, about the proposal. So, under the Charter, I don't have the bylaws in front of me, but under the Charter, it says, "Special town meeting shall be convened at such times as may be called by the Select Board or by petition of registered voters as provided by law." And so, Bill, to your point to parse the words, you're not being asked to call the town meeting. It's going to be called when they give you those certified signatures. You're just scheduling it within forty-five days.
Right.
You must schedule it within forty-five days.
Must schedule it within forty-five days.
And so, and then they're going to give you a warrant, or sorry, an article, and then we're going to, Debbie will take the article language and craft up the warrant and do everything, and then at the next meeting, you're going to sign the warrant.
Right. And Stephen, if I could just jump to that. I mean, in theory, a Select Board who wants to get nasty can say, okay, we're going to schedule it for, you know, Sunday at three AM and because we don't want anybody to show up, or we're going to schedule it on a Tuesday evening because we want people, you know, and not that we're going to do that, but, but that's all we could possibly do to influence that. And that's not much because chances are, we're going to make it on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night or something like that.
That's it. The basketball volleyball schedules are going to have a lot more to do. We're going to have a meeting than anything else.
You're right.
It may be Sunday at three because the gym, we want to have, the lottery doesn't want to have it in the gym, I do know that.
Doesn't want to have it?
Wants to have it in the gym. And the gym availability is tight in winter time.
Yeah. And so, but I, you know, wrapping this up, I guess I would just say that, you know, there's been several times, I, as I've been on the board, where folks have been concerned about not getting information early enough to be able to make a decision. Like say, well, you know, I just, I didn't know enough about this and just, I got it the last minute, I had to make a decision. And so, part of this is just to make sure that the folks who are we asking to make decisions, like the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, you know, and the Cultural, you know, and the Cultural Affairs, it's not Cultural Affairs, but whatever.
Historic Commission.
Historic Commission, which actually, I, that we should, this provide them an opportunity to understand the issues before they have to sit down and make that decision because they may have to make it the same night that they hear their presentation. I don't know for sure.
Just clarify the record, Historic Commission's already voted on this issue.
Historic Commission has already voted. I thought they had.
No, they have not. The Story have, I think this is a point that's been raised a lot.
Yeah.
Historic District Commission, as a group, voted to, in a kind of non-binding way, like a, like a non-binding referendum.
Yeah.
Voted to endorse the concept of the zone change and the proposal. There is going to be a future, if it, if everything passes the way the gentleman wanted to, they're going to go through a design review process with the Historic District Commission. And then Historic District Commission will consider a certificate of appropriateness, which is their official, official act.
That's, okay.
But as stewards of the Historic District, they all unanimously agree that this was a good idea. I'm not speaking for them. This is a report I got back.
Yeah.
But they, they are going to have another approval if this all goes down the line.
I did, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
Stephen, you said we vote, so they give us a petition, we vote on it, and then we need a second meeting to sign the warrant?
Well, you'll have a, you may, maybe you don't. I mean, don't you have to, even for a special time meeting, don't you have to sign the warrant?
Sure, imagine.
But it has to be a second meeting.
It has to be signed and posted.
So, it has to be a second meeting. So, we need two meetings.
Well, you could, we could have the warrant prepared with the signature page. If we, if we have their article language in advance, which I suspect we will, we could have the whole thing printed up and you could schedule a town meeting and close the warrant and sign it right then and there.
I'm just thinking holidays. I mean, Hanukkah's beginning, December twelfth.
We can have it done right then and there, or you could vote to approve it and come by, that's, try and stop by and sign it. We can have it all done for that night.
Right. And then in forty-five.
Debbie's looking at you.
Debbie's looking at you like, no, you can't stop talking.
Oh.
She's giving me a look.
Bring it to town clerk, has to.
Certify the signatures.
All those signatures.
Yeah. I can talk to the, those guys to see if they can make sure they get their signatures in well in advance of our Thursday afternoon packet time. So, the other, sorry, the other part of this is the Planning Board, just to kind of touch all the bases on the process.
Yeah.
They're meeting Monday for a, I would say, informal review, but to advance the site and design review process. The Planning Board must make a report to, we just went through this at the special, right?